Let everybody in?
Yep.
All right.
Do you see the recording? Let's make sure that the red thing. Are we recording?
Yes, you are recording.
All right, take care.
And Stephanie, if you could mute. Visitors when you get to it.
I'm not getting it through my headphones. For some reason.
We can hear you through your headphones, Ben.
You're supposed to mute me.
I'm working on it.
Where are you, Stephanie?
Oh, that's our new camper.
Very nice.
Thanks.
Is it a pop-up? Yeah.
It is, but it's a fully loaded pop-up.
Woo!
It's got a bathroom, Dave. Yeah.
John's putting it in his next combine, right, John?
Yeah. Take up some more room.
You don't have to ever go home. Just stay right out there.
Hardly ever home now.
Okay, are we ready to start?
Well, you're ready? Okay. Gubernatorial Disaster Proclamation, Executive Order 2020-07, Executive Order in Response to the COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, as amended by Executive Order 2023-33, Executive Order in Response to COVID-19 Execution Order Number Thirty-One, and as reissued and extended by Executive Order 2020-39, Executive Order in Response to COVID-19 Executive Order Number Thirty-Seven, Open Meeting Act, five Illinois, one twenty-two, site slash two, and twenty-one twenty slash seven, Suspension of Public Body Physically Present and Limiting Remote Participation. As President of the Board of Trustees in the McHenry County Conservation District, I have determined that it is not practical or prudent to hold a public meeting of the Board of Trustees on June 23rd, 2020, in person due to the current pandemic, PA 101-0640. Public's meetings agenda was posted to the district's website at MCCdistrict.org. So, Ann, are you ready to take a roll call?
I am. Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Brant?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Henning?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
And Trustee Scotty?
Here.
We have a full house.
Okay, I would like to have a consideration of a motion to allow the Board of Trustees to attend remotely through electronic participation and per administrative policy 2.0402, the basis for missing the meeting is due to the personal illness and per the state of Illinois Gubernatorial Disaster Proclamation, Executive Order 2020-07, and PA 101-0640, suspending requirements that members of the public body must be physically present. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Trustee Fritz moved. And who seconded? Trustee Thomas, gotcha.
Okay.
Wait, I have to do a roll call vote. Trustee Fritz?
Okay.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
We did, with the new rules, we have to, every vote has to be roll call.
Right. Okay, if we could move on to 3.0, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion and second? So moved. John Henning?
I'll second. Carolyn Campbell seconds, yep.
Okay. Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee? Trustee Henning?
Okay, you broke up there, yes.
Yeah, you broke up.
I'm sorry. Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We have no 4.0 special recognition, so we'll move on to 5.0 trustees' reports. Or report, does anybody? We have somebody trying to come on, Ann, from what I could see.
Yeah, Stephanie got her, Stephanie got him.
Okay. It's 5.0 trustees' report. Do any of the trustees want to make any reports on anything they did or were involved with since the last meeting?
I guess I have something for, just with that bio-reactor. I saw Dave, Dave I see Elizabeth were emailing back and forth on that. And I called Dan Volkers from the Farm Bureau to find out King County has theirs done, to find out what it ended up costing, so that if it's out of line of the $10,000, they can let us know.
Hey, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Now, 6.0, County Board Liaison Report. Are you gonna give us some updates?
Yeah.
No way?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. It sounds like somebody's breaking up or breaking apart. But I did want to say that there's not too much going on other than the pandemic, which is about everything in the whole world. Everything's changing right now. But, as Elizabeth mentioned in her report, the county board is looking forward to going into Phase Four. And we're happy to see a lot more of the businesses and restaurants opening up. I know myself, we've been out, so my wife and I have been out to a few restaurants dining outside, which has been really nice. I think a lot nicer and safer than possibly dining inside. But I know that's opening up, I believe, at the end of this week. So, that's interesting. I know last Sunday was the first time we got a chance to go back to church, which was very exciting, too. Little different, but it was nice. It was nice to go back there and visit that church. It's a, it's a nice place to be. So, so next month, the county board in July, as I think I read in the report, the county board will be meeting back in Woodstock there, at the Administrative Building. So, we're all looking forward to that. You know, with the six-foot separation, but back in the same room, not trying to manipulate this internet, which is like stress to the max right now with everybody. So, other nats, I did talk to Jack Franks, and we have a few applicants for the position. I know Vern is stepping away at the end of this month, so. Peter, I talked to Peter, too, and we're trying to schedule some interviews. And that's even a little bit different, difficult with everybody's schedule. But hopefully, we can get somebody pretty quick for you. So, that's about it. You know, just trying to be safe, I guess.
Thank you. Thanks. Before I go on, President's Report, I'm gonna move that, if everybody's okay with it, to the end of the agenda. Since it's my last meeting, I'll give my President's Report at that time. And I just wanted to make everybody aware that we have Christine Wolf from Tressler. She's one of the attorneys that the board met here. And she's just joining us to understand, you know, what we're like and what we do at our meetings. And Andrew and I talked about that and thought it'd be a good idea to get her, you know, familiar with who the people are and what we do, so. Andy, Christine?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me be here. Welcome.
Good to see you again.
Nice seeing you as well.
The next item, 8.0, public comments. Anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment to the board? We appreciate your comments. So, I assume, Stephanie, you'll be in charge of letting us know if anybody's wants to ask anything or make a comment?
Yep, I'm watching. I don't see anything, though. Nope.
I. I. Stop. Uh-oh.
No, losing Vern.
Losing Vern.
I saw no hands or comments, so.
Yeah, we lost Vern, though.
That's the hard part.
Yep.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm being knocked off. This is the third time, and it comes back. But I was asking, did anybody hear anything from anybody in the public comments section?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. If that's the case, we'll move on to 9.0, the consent agenda. Does anybody want to take any of the items off the consent agenda? 9.1 through 9.8? Anything? If not?
Vern?
Yeah?
Yeah, I was actually thinking about this. Since the WikiWound Friday, I'd like to pull 9.3, only just because I think it would be great to just get a very, very brief description. That is the second reading of the strategic plan, just to get, just a quick summary from Elizabeth, if you don't mind, Elizabeth, just where we're headed, so that we're all on the same page. You know, not having, none of us really having been through this process, I think that would be helpful. And you had mentioned, you started to talk a little bit about it in your WikiWound there on Friday, Elizabeth, which I appreciated, so. Am I, did I break up?
No, Vern did.
No, Vern is, you're not.
Am I okay, everybody?
Yes.
Yes. I'll stop talking, but that's the one I wanted to take off.
Process, do you want that item removed off the agenda? Move everything else forward and then come back to that? President Scotty?
Yeah, I did, oh, he's.
I, yeah, I couldn't hear Lynn, her voice. I don't know if it's just me, but I keep on getting knocked off, but it keeps on bringing me back on. I don't know if anybody else is having that problem.
Not yet.
Okay. So, we're going to take 9.3, second reading, Resolution 20-48, Adoption of Fiscal Year 2021 through 2023 Strategic Plan off. And we'll discuss it after we vote on the others. Does anybody else want to take any item off the consent agenda? Not hearing any, Lynn, you can go ahead and go ahead and start reading.
Okay.
Point of order, usually we make an emotion to approve, and then second, I get confused here with the new rules. So, we.
Okay, so my, I'm. Yeah, so when I read the entire thing, that is the motion. I move to pass, and then I read all of them. And then you guys, somebody can fight to second that.
Somebody second that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it is confusing, but we had to take the other one off. So, and I know not to read bid numbers. I didn't see that in time for last month, Elizabeth, but thank you for that tip. And so, I move that we approve the consent agenda as follows. 9.1, Approval of Minutes of Previous Meetings. 9.1A, May 21, 2020 Finance and Admin Meeting. 9.1B, May 26, 2020 Regular Meeting, Public Session. 9.2, Acceptance of the Treasurers' Report for May 31, 2020 as Presented. 9.2A, Treasurers' Report, May 31, 2020. 9.3.
Lynn? There was 9, 1, C, D, E, and F.
Okay. Let me pull something else up.
Good catch, Vern.
Yeah, you know what, I may not, I apologize for that. I kind of went to what I had on. So, let me get up to the top of this here. I apologize. Here we go. Is it the one that's currently out there, Ann?
Yeah.
All right, I'm just gonna have to download and pull it back up. It's not letting me open it.
Can you see the screen in front of you?
Can you see the screen? Yeah, can you see the screen?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay, you want me just to go from there?
Yeah.
Okay. 9.1C, February 25, 2020 Executive Session. 9.1D, March 4, 2020 Executive Session. 9.1E, March 24, 2020 Executive Session. 9.1F, April 21, 2020 Executive Session. 9.2, Acceptance of Treasurers' Report, May 31, 2020. 9.3, second, no, we're passing that one. 9.4, Authorization to Prepare Specifications and Leading of Bids for the Purchase of Unleaded Diesel and Propane Fuels for a Contract Period of One Year Beginning September 1, 2020. 9.5, Resolution Number 20-49, A Resolution Authorizing the Executive Director to Execute a First Amendment to the Agricultural Lease Agreements on the Landau Parcel, Reducing Tillable Acres From 243 Plus or Minus Acres to 213.5 Plus or Minus Acres, and to Execute an Agricultural Lease Cancellation Agreement on the Bi Parcel for 38.5 Plus or Minus Acres with Phil Walters of Hebron, Illinois as presented. 9.6, Resolution Number 20-50, A Resolution Appointing Pamela J. Althoff, 2020 to 2023, as a Director to the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. 9.7, Village of Algonquin Markers Path, Park Path Prairie Trail. 9.7A, Resolution Number 20-51, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Algonquin Concerning Transactional Plans Accommodating Markers Park Path. 9.7B, Resolution Number 20-52, A Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance of McHenry County Conservation District Property as well as a License over certain other property to the Village of Algonquin. 9.8, Resolution Number 20-53, A Resolution Authorizing the Executive Director to Execute an Agreement with Everstream Solutions LLC to Establish and Provide a Fiber Internet Connection for an Initial Term of One Year and Auto Renewals for Four Additional Years at a Fixed Monthly Cost of 500 per Month.
I'll second.
Vice President Brant? Okay, ready for roll call? Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz? Trustee Fritz, you're on mute, I think.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I would like a motion to go back to item 9.3, Second Reading, Resolution 2048, Adopting Fiscal Year 21 through 23 Strategic Plan. Is there any discussion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Brant, second.
Got it? Okay, discussion.
All right. Yeah, so, yeah, that would be great, Elizabeth, if you just turn that over to you. Thanks.
So, for strategic planning, this has been a process that we've been working on for a while. We've been collecting data. As you recall, we did have a consultant come in and work with the board and the executive leadership team. And we went through a variety of pieces of paper on the wall with thought-provoking questions. And we analyzed our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats. And from all of that, we've been pulling that together, to which then with the VEIs and the board, which I've shown this before, which we had first reading last month, we identified four pillars, which is our water, our land, our community, and our stewardship of the areas of focus that we would be working forward with together as a board and staff. We also then in the plan identify our strategic direction and the purpose. And so, that is our destination, our target of where we were going. And then we have goals underneath each of those areas. Each one has a variety of different ones that are highlighted. And we have had concurrence on that. So, that's basically step one. So, from tonight, being that it's on second reading, once the board adopts that as the plan, then as staff and with the VEIs, we work towards the specific tactics. And the tactics are the, how we're going to get to these places to which the board agrees and has concurrence on. And they're done in a measurable step that can take, working together over the duration of the plan, to work us towards the specific goals and strategic direction. We will come back to you, hopefully in July, with a detailed plan of the tactics for the board to review. And then you can look at that, and you can say, you know, yes, you're heading in the right direction, and you need some more work on this, or no, we're voting that down. We don't believe that's realistic. We're not in concurrence with that, because there's many ways to get you towards your strategic goals. These are going to be solutions that we, as a staff, believe that we can do. Being that we're starting budget, and we're already into this fiscal year, you know, one of the things to keep in mind that anything that would be, that we'll present to you later, the first year, have either already been incorporated into this budget. So, really, it's going to be key to align this with our budget as we move forward for fiscal year '22 and '23. And the board may also feel at that time that because we're just approving the plan, that we may want to add another year, and we can go back in and amend that. Let's say that to make all these things happen, we're gonna need some additional time. So, that's still yet to come. But I think to the details that I heard, and I'm listening, I did have a conversation with President Scotty, I think in between and before the last meeting, of just with some ideas of what those tactics would look like. And what I can assure you is our plan that we're presenting this time, it is different as compared to prior plans that the district has pursued. One, because of resources, and two, we want to make it manageable in listening and understanding that we can accomplish whatever we lay out in our tactics that we're going to be able to achieve. So, we will be bringing that back to you if this is approved next month. Does that help, Hunter?
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, that's great. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments? Lynn, did you want to ask any, add anything?
To me, personally? No, I think that that was fine, because I think that that was, kind of gets us to that next step, since we hadn't done that before. So, that, I appreciate it.
Okay. So, do I have, there's a motion second. Ann, you want to take a vote, a roll call vote?
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we finished the consent agenda. I'd like to move to new, unfinished board business, 10.0. And I'd like to ask if there's any questions on the items we pulled at last month's meeting on the internal audit from the treasurer. Andy, you're here, I assume?
He's muted. There he goes.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Andy on the items that were moved, pulled last month? Okay, if not, does somebody want to pull three of them? Or several people want to pull three of them in total for next month?
I have one. Concentric integration. Just because I don't know what that is. Thank you.
Do you have enough information, Andy, to know what it is? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
You got it, Andy?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be fine.
Okay. Vendor E0042, Ed's Rental for $258.75. Anybody else got another one? Hearing none. Vendor T, well, I can't read my own writing. 3932 or 5932, Turnkey Digital for $9,972 even.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any others they want to add? If not, I would like to move on. I'm sorry. Andy, did you get all those?
I got them, yep.
Okay. Hearing no others. I'd like to move to 10.1B, Motion for Consideration to Approve the Payment of the Council of FS as indicated on the Submission of Bill's Pending Report for the period ending May 31, 2020.
I'll move.
I'll second, okay. Ann?
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
I'll abstain.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Motion passes with one abstention.
Okay, I'd like to move on to item 10.1C, Approval of Payments of the Balance of Bills as indicated on the Submission of Bill's Pending Report for the month ending May 31, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
That, Pat?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion on any of that? If not, Ann, would you do a roll call?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to move on to item 10.2, First Reading Personnel Policy and Procedural Manual, amended 7, amending 7.27, Emergency Closing. This was after our discussion at the last meeting regarding emergency situations that are considered national disasters and things larger than snowstorms or fire or things that are more local in nature and shorter in duration. Does anybody have anything they would like to add to what was changed in the personnel policy manual?
So, I will just make a comment. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna. It, the only thing that we're adding is what we discussed at the last meeting, which is, in an emergency, a pandemic or a national disaster would be a 10-day period that the director would have discretion to send people home and pay for their time off. And then the board would meet to decide what they would do after that, after those 10 days or during that 10 days, as to what the direction the district board would take. There's no motion on this, it's just discussion. This is a first reading discussion. The next one, 10.3, same thing here. First reading amending General Order to Allow for Inclusion of All Classes of Electric and Electric Assist Bicycles. We had a discussion a long time ago. This one kind of took its own path down the electric bike path. And we're bringing it back. So, any discussion on that? If not, we'll go for second reading next month. 10.4, Resolution Number 20-54, Resolution Adopting a Financing Strategy to Pay Off the $4.3 Million Peach and installment Loan for in fiscal year 2021. Do I have a motion?
So.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay.
Go with Bill. I'll second.
I would just like to say, I want to thank staff, Andy and his staff, whoever may have helped him put this together, uh, from staff, um, and the board coming together and I thought doing an outstanding job in putting together a resolution that we're voting on tonight to, um, finally put the pension bed to bed and, um, and, and pay it off in a, a manner that I thought is outstanding move, which benefits everybody, the board, the staff and the residents of McHenry County. So I can't tell you how proud I am of this board to come to this point and be able to read this resolution tonight and get it passed.
Shoot, we lost Vern.
Pardon me?
We lost you for a second, Vern.
Okay, Anne, you want to do a roll call vote?
Was there any discussion? Any more discussion?
I'm sorry, I, I, I thought that's what we were doing. I'm sorry, John. Go ahead.
I just, I just want to know if there was any more discussion is all, I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm just, um, and I asked after we, if we pass it, after we pass it, I guess I'd like to have Andy tell us what the timeframe of everything is on it.
Okay.
Can I, um, make one, one statement on the resolution? So we were proofreading from our discussion of last, um, Thursday evening and we do need to, on the resolution, add under now therefore be it resolved, we need a number four that specifically talks to pay off all of the related debt within calendar year 2027. Um, right, because, uh, we needed a, a language change there so that we get it right on the resolution.
Okay.
Oh, I see the very second of lessons, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just to make sure that, because it says in 2026 to pay off all, pay off the debt certificates in full and pay off all the related debt within calendar year 2027. So we need to, we need to.
That's right. Okay.
Any other discussion before I take the roll?
Uh, no, yes, uh, John asked Andy a question, uh, timeframe of moving this payment, the 20, I assume you meant the 2020 payment, John, the, the 1.9 million payment?
Right. I, I was, I asked for that clarification after we, after we passed it, if, if we pass it, I'm assuming we will, but, um, yeah, that, I just thought we could have, you know, I don't know exactly when, when that's, everything's going to happen in the shares all.
Do you have anything, Andy, you can show? I know when we talked, you said, once we pass the resolution, you were going to start to put the wheels in motion and I assume the board would updates at the, either the next finance committee meeting or the next, um, board meeting?
Yeah, I would, I think in July we'd be bringing some more information forward. The fast track on this without getting too bogged down in the details is probably 60 to 90 days to do a public offering, to actually close the deal. Um, and obviously, you know, rates could change between now and then, um, but they haven't moved a lot, if anything, you know, they're still trending a little bit downward. Um, but the other thing we'll have to do is kind of select a team, um, you know, basically we'll come forward with a recommendation, um, for a financial advisor that would, you know, basically lead us through the transaction, um, and we'll need a legal bond or legal counsel on it too. And what we would try and do is set a competitive fee and show the board, you know, the fee that, um, the two that we would recommend is very competitive and then it would be up to the board, if you wanted to accept that, you could, otherwise we could go out for an RFP, but that would add, you know, easily 60 days to the process to develop that, send it out, you get it back and make a selection, but we can go into those details in July.
Okay. John, is that, give you what you're looking for?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John.
We have a motion on the floor.
Right. And, and I think we're, we had a second, I believe.
Yep.
So roll call?
Okay. Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Scotty.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. 10 dot five, we can deal with this one finally. Considerations, remove ordinance number 20 dash nine eight zero from the table and ordinance authorizing the transfer of 225,000 from the general fund to the capital improvement plan capital fund within fiscal year 2020. Do I have a motion to remove this from the table?
I move.
I'll brand second.
Anne, any discussion?
Now what? Off the floor.
We have to have the vote.
Right.
We have to vote, take it off.
Yeah.
Okay, vote to take it off the table is trustee Brandt. Trustee Brandt, would you like to take it off the table? Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
And trustee Scotty.
Yes.
Okay, now you have a motion to move it forward or?
No, it's mute now, right?
No.
No, we can move it forward. I move, I move that we, uh, take ordinance number 20 dash nine eighty and go ahead and vote on it.
So is it?
Is the transfer of 225,000 from the general fund to the capital improvement plan capital fund within fiscal year 2020. Is there a second?
Oh, yes, second.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have a question.
Now I'm questioning it too. Go ahead.
So, so this was the $225,000 we're going to use to pay the, the interest only each year, is that correct on the, on the, on the?
Debt certificate.
The debt certificate, the debt certificate, yes. So.
Andy's got his hand raised here.
No, I don't think so.
I do.
Go ahead, Andy.
Is this, are we now proposing to move forward with transferring the 225 to this camp fund?
No.
Based, I would sit this down, if you don't want this to happen, based on the, uh, motion that you just made on resolution 2054, everybody should vote no.
This, yeah, this is a vote, no, to not have this happen. Okay, then I'm fine.
Okay. Right, because then this is the money that's going to be moved to, to pay, and, and where is that money going to be held then, Andy, when we vote this down?
Well, once we actually have the transaction and we know, you know, the, the specific structure, it should be kind of close to the numbers I gave you, but it won't be exact. Um, at that point, we would come forward to the board and say, here's the amount we want to transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund. So there's actually a installment loan contract debt service fund and we do it to that, that's where it would be, um, committed just for that purpose.
Right. Okay. Okay, so, so to, to make all that happen, we should vote this down then?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's too late to do anything to fiscal year 20 because we just got the audited financials back, that's why I'm.
Right. Okay.
Okay, trustee Thomas.
No.
Thank you. Just to check and trusty Henning.
Thanks, 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 Linda.
No, and after, after Linda's response, I'd be afraid to vote any differently.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
Trustee Fritz.
No.
Trustee Brandt.
No.
Trustee Campbell.
No.
Trustee Cook.
No.
And trustee Scotty.
No.
Motion does not pass.
Okay. We'll go to an easy one. 10 dot six, update on COVID-19 pandemic preparedness response every plan.
Elizabeth? This will be brief, thank you. Um, and as we sent out today in our weekly update, um, the governor is moving us to the next phase on Friday. So for us at the conservation district, it's just minor tweaking to how we're doing business because we already have been open and our residents are coming out to use their conservation areas. Uh, we are as busy as ever. Um, you will see an opportunity with some of the restrictions, um, that have been lifted on the number of participants that can come together. So some of the big highlights that I think is relative, um, is our programs, for example, that we did begin offering, um, everybody is, is signing up, they're very active to be participating, but we'll be able to increase those numbers of participants, letting more people participate, so that's good. Um, our visitor centers, uh, were scheduled to open on July 1st and, uh, for our buildings to come in and out and use the bathrooms, um, so that will happen, uh, in July, we'll be able to also, uh, do as we did, uh, last Thursday evening for our board meetings to bring us back in, unless the board president determines that, uh, we need to do something different, um, because we could go backwards, we're not anticipating at this time. Um, and then as far as our campsites and picnic shelters, um, we've had some discussion and right now, you know, obviously we've had to go back, um, in order to keep our sites cleaned and maintained because we don't have our seasonal staff. And so, um, we're not looking to really make any changes, uh, to that, uh, area of operation. Um, again, we are getting residents out using our sites, they are camping, um, but so really, uh, it's just minor, um, staff will be continuing to do their work, um, those that can work remotely and be successful as they have been will continue, but there is more traffic in our buildings with staff. So that's basically it. Right now we're well, so which is good, we want to keep it that way.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions, uh, from anybody on Elizabeth and, uh, preparedness, pandemic preparedness plan or what we're doing? If not, I would like to move to 10 dot seven, uh, resolution 20 dash 55, a resolution confirming the intent not to renew the second employment agreement between McHenry County Conservation District and Executive Directors of Elizabeth Kessler on its current terms. I'd like to just read a, a brief statement before we, uh, go to a motion and any type of discussion. In order to help the public better understand this particular resolution, I would like to provide some additional context before the board discuss this further. Despite the title of the resolution, this is an effect, a proc, a procedural matter required by the terms of the executive director's current employment contract. Ms. Kessler's current contract is effective through June 30th, 2022. This resolution does not change the current term and Ms. Kessler remains under contract with the district through that date. Further, the same terms and conditions that currently govern her employment with the district will continue through June 30th, 2022. In other words, this resolution does not do anything to change the terms of Ms. Kessler's current employment with the district. What this resul, uh, resolution does do is eliminate the auto renew feature in the current contract. As I said, the current term of the agreement runs through June 30th, 2022. However, the contract has an auto renewal feature that automatically extends the current contract on the same terms and conditions for an additional two-year period app since specific action by one or both of the parties. The deadline to notify the other party of the decision to opt out of the auto renewal function is June 30th, 2020. After preliminary discussion at the county meeting last week, it was the consensus of the board that opting out of the auto renewal function was in the best interest of the district. Ms. Kessler sent a letter to the board earlier this month notifying the board that she too thought it was in the best interest of the district to opt out of the auto renewal feature at this time. So as this stage, both parties are on the same page and the action tonight, at the, and this action tonight is needed to formalize the board's decision. So with that being said, I would like to have a motion for resolution 20 dash 55, confirming the intent not to renew the second employment agreement between McHenry County Conservation District and Executive Director Elizabeth Kessler on its current terms. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Who moved?
I did, John Henning.
Thank you.
I second Pat Fritz.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Anne, would you like to take a roll call vote?
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell. Trustee Campbell?
I'm sorry, I muted myself, yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
And trustee Scotty.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, um, moving on to 11 dot O, executive directors report.
Um, I will say comments later, I just want to, uh, just briefly thank the board, uh, for having the opportunity to do my review, uh, last week and I look forward to continuing conversation with you, uh, to best understand, uh, your direction and areas that, that we can work together, so I appreciate that. I also want to acknowledge and appreciate you recognizing the opportunity to relook at the contract, um, as well as, um, President Scotty, I want to thank you for your service this year, as well as your term on the board, uh, for the duration of the past five years and the time that led up to, uh, you pursuing this path. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're at 12 dot O, public comments. Uh, is anybody, um, whoever's looking at the, at the screens out there, anybody raising their hand for public comments, Anne?
I don't see anything. I don't see anyone.
Okay, if not, we will move to 13 dot O.
I have one more, if I can, I have one more thing, my apologies here. If I could, just to back it up. Um, I did send a communication out to the board on the matter that we've been working with special counsel with trustor on behalf of the Park District Risk Management Agency on our 300 West. And, uh, there will be a detailed, uh, memorandum coming from legal counsel Steve Grossmark, uh, which you should be getting into your mailbox shortly, that'll kind of go into the specifics of, uh, what we'll be talking about later as, as next steps. But it was in front of, of the, um, McHenry County Health Department, uh, with a request by 300 West to have a groundwater use ordinance and, uh, and so be looking to your mailbox for that information.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. No public comments. We're back to 13 dot O, recognition of outgoing board member Scotty. Uh, I would like to just, um, take, move one or seven, um, president's, president's comments or president's report and just use this time to say a few words. And I will start accordingly. Uh, first, I would like to thank those many staff members who have made the past five years both enjoyable and extreme, an extremely interesting experience for me personally. And I was trying to put names down and as you all know, when you start doing that, you leave one person off and you don't want to make anybody, there were many, many, many people I've met over the last five years, uh, had great discussions, went out on jobs that they did, uh, took ride alongs with the police department, uh, counted muscles, uh, looked at fish, um, helped, uh, Rangers look at, uh, ways to better make, to better, uh, make the trails, uh, more, have more enjoyable experience and, um, and, and with the managers in each of those departments. So I, I have to tell you, it was, it was very, very insightful and extremely, um, exciting to me to learn more about the district in such detail. I would also like to thank my fellow trustees and staff members who over the past year have supported the goals and objectives I outlined in the July 2019 board meeting when I became president. Lynn, I'd like to thank you for helping me and the board reevaluate, uh, the assessment format that was used to evaluate Elizabeth's, uh, director's performance report for 2019-20 period and the board for approving a cultural assessment survey involving the leadership team that will begin next week, the 29th. John, Pat and Lynn and, uh, not to say the least, Andy and his staff, along with the other directors for establish, reestablishing the finance committee, reducing the timeframe in which the 2021 budget was established and guiding the district's budget through the successful passage of our 2021 budget by the county board prior to the end of the 2020 fiscal year. I don't know what happened in the past, but this is the first time we've ever done that and I might term in the, on the board. The board working with John Kramer and his staff establishing a projects list that was used to both monitor the 2019, 2020 projects that was reviewed on a quarterly basis and will be utilized, that format, as we establish those projects that will be included in our 2022 budget. The board working with Ed Collins and his organization in informing, uh, informalizing the long range plan, our natural assets as it relates to how the district moves forward with both purchasing additional properties and how they will be used to benefit the citizens of McHenry County, along with the plants and wildlife and those who live in those sites, pardon me. Wendy Coomer, who has provided the board insights into how Wendy Coomer, who has provided the board insights into how she and her staff, and basically all new staff, envision the district's moving forward in both the social media and educational services to McHenry County residents. Linda Thomas, I would like to thank her, along with Shawna Prevel and the foundation board in establishing a process to move the district's funding request to the foundation and tracking them through completion. Bill Cook, Bill, I'd like to thank you for your diligence in working with staff and the board to evaluate our legal requirements and services required that led to the selection of Trustler LLP as our new legal counsel. The board coming together and Andy for developing option sevens, we call it, to pay off the pension loan that was accepted by both board and staff and will benefit the citizens of McHenry County for years to come. It was the board's intention not to leave future generations with debt that they would have to pay off. It was our responsibility to do that, and we have done that, and I thank you again. The board did not discuss how the district could better understand and communicate with the McHenry County farm community and new sources of revenue for the district services. I feel bad about that, that we didn't, that we weren't able to get into those areas, but perhaps future boards will take up these issues. I would like to thank one. Yes, I would like to thank one last person who can always, who you can always depend on to give a helping hand, advice, and share her years of knowledge. When I have conversations with her, I always leave with a smile. And I'd like to say, Ann, best of luck to you in your retirement, you will sorely be missed at the district, believe me.
Thank you.
And next, and next year, the district will celebrate its 50th anniversary, and I'm sure Pat's father, one of the founders of the district, did not envision the district structure, structure we have today. So best of luck to the district, future boards of trustees who will serve in the years to come. And the last thing, we talked this once before, and I'd like to end with it. The board has a response, role of the board, the board has responsibilities for managing the affairs of the organization, its directions, program priorities, resource allocations, and both financial performance and planning. The almost, the ultimate responsibility for the organization's program, activities, and fiscal integrity rests with the board of directors. The board sets the leadership tone, so I wish you all the best of luck in the coming years, whatever remaining time you have on your term. And it was enjoyable working with the board members that I have worked with this year, so thank you very much. I appreciate your patience with me and the support. That's it. So. We could move to item fourteen dot O, if you would like, adjourn.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn, and thank you Vern for your service.
Thank you, John.
I'll second, and thank you Vern very much.
Okay. Ann, you want to have a roll call?
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz? Trustee Fritz?
He's muted.
He's already, he's already.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Your meeting is officially over.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Can I say, can I ask a question? I caught something in Vern's speech, Ann, you're retiring?
Oh, you didn't know that, huh?
Why do I not know that, and when?
We don't have a firm date yet, but this fall, this.
Oh.
TBD.
Well, congratulations, you will sorely be missed.
Thank you.
That the truth, ain't that the truth, Ann?
Yeah, it is. All right.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
All right, good night, everybody, thank you.